Monday, July 1st, Board Supervisor Meeting. If anybody would please stand for the pledge of allegiance to the Constitution. My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, just as for all. No more silence. Thank you. Mr. Whitson is out today, out of state, I believe. And to adopt the agenda, I would like to remove or make a motion to remove the closed session and Q1 this evening. Mr. Carney will not be able to join us either, and I think it's best that we have all of our group members here for this agenda items.
I'll second that motion.
The motion and the second, any discussion?
There's no agenda items, or just the correspondence?
Just information.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Moving into presentations, Dr. Grimsley is not here today, but her report is attached. Do have four employee recognitions today. Nobody's here. July's a bad month.
For the good of the group, you have Chris Garcia and Willie Shanks, who have five years of service, and Ricky Jenkins and Debbie Nink, who have two years of service. So we'll make sure those certificates and things are provided.
Excellent. You see them out and about, please thank them for their service in the county. Company four update.
Good afternoon. We had in June nineteen EMS calls with ten scratches, and we had eleven different personnel responding. We had nine fire calls with only one scratch and thirteen different people responding. I got to go on my first part. So the update on the EMT class, we've had five of our Flintfield EMT trainees have passed, well, everybody's passed the test and apply to pass the test and are in the precepting phase where we have supervised contact with patients. Two more are going to take the test and they're at the precepting phase. And then if we're successful, we'll be released by the chief and turned loose on unsuspecting public. And I'd like to thank publicly the folks that have been helping us so much from all over the county, but especially Sperryville and the Gap, including the paid professionals there and the paid professionals on 1400. And you know how much we appreciate this water to work with us. And thank you for funding them and allowing them to extend their duties to helping us get up and running. Are there any questions? Oh, we have a new fully qualified firefighter we helped promote in this area. So we're getting there.
That's great.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, moving into public comments. Anyone wishing to speak, please be recognized with a number of people in the room. I think we can do five minutes. Give us your name and your district.
Oh, once again. So I do want to make just some general comments about the Laurel Ridge appointment.
Me and district, sorry.
I'm sorry, Piedmont District. Yes, Anne Yeoman, Piedmont District. I know Ibi pretty well. I've worked with her a lot. She's certainly more than requalified and you can't go wrong there. But I do want to make a couple of observations that are specific to Rappahannock. Leaving aside funding, because Laurel Ridge, like other community colleges, of course, have funding issues, they're not fully funded from the state system. So leaving that aside. I noticed in this year's pictures of all the graduates in the paper that there's a very large number, something like thirty-five percent, that are going directly to work, at least according to the notes under their pictures. And a somewhat smaller number are taking up either some form of career, technical education, or two-year education, maybe about twenty-one percent. Okay, so that's more than fifty percent of the graduated class. So the school system and the profile of the graduate team, I'm totally aware it worked really hard over time with Laurel Ridge to encourage students to take advantage of dual enrollment and skilled trades and new career-oriented programs that are coming online in technology and other areas. So that's a great resource or a great relationship that obviously needs to continue to be built. But a couple of questions, or not questions exactly, a couple of concerns. Is it possible to do more to link those students, those new graduates, who are going directly to work with additional training and certifications? It wouldn't be easy, and I'm sure this is not a new idea. I'm sure people puzzled after a long time, but I do think it is a big concern, given the number of students that we have. Another group to consider is those adults who've been out of school two, three, five years, who've been working. And they benefit and they'd be persuaded to, would they see it to their advantage to somehow get some kind of additional training? Both these groups probably have other obligations and families and all the kinds of things. So I think there's already a lot happening there with Laurel Ridge and the school system and so forth, so certainly kudos to that. But I think part of what's going on here is that the general concerns about the economy, how much school costs, things like that, have overshadowed an awareness of, in many cases, of the opportunities that Laurel Ridge and similar kinds of institutions offer. And so I guess one of the issues would be, can we do more to communicate more effectively to these groups like these two and maybe some others? So I think Laurel Ridge has a lot to offer, continue to offer, so much to build around. Clients have been having fun, headwater students that are being supported and others that I'm aware of could certainly attest to that. So in any event, I am certain that Laurel Ridge will continue to be number one, which it is now amongst the Virginia community colleges, for innovation and adaptation to changing circumstances. And I'm sure that it will continue to expand its partnerships with Rappahannock schools and other entities within Rappahannock to basically foster more upward mobility, more economic stability for residents and students.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Anita Ramos, Hampton District. I've brought this up before, and I'll bring that up again. Just recently, in the Rappahannock News, there was a big set of ads for visiting various places in the general vicinity. One page of it was about Rappahannock County, which was an ad for the Inns little place. And that was it. The Washington Post the other day, in the Sunday section, had a big ad, not big, three pages a piece for two counties in West Virginia, Berkeley and Jefferson, touting how lovely they are. I know we don't have a lot of tourism money, but I think we need to think hard about tourism money. It's passing us by. And so I'd like to see the county put some effort into it, the business community too. And there's things going on here, and there's all those millions of Airbnbs and BnBs that are purple. So we might as well try to do something to bring people here. As I say to people from out of state, I say, come, visit beautiful Virginia, have a good time, spend money, go home. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Grimsley.
Ron McElroy, Jackson District. I just want to make a few comments. You're going to be doing under New Business the open forum of public comment procedures today with last month's, if you didn't do it then. I just wanted to comment, number one, I was just wondering why, in that I really, in all the years I've been coming here or whatever, I've never seen any real problems. But yes, I do know that there can be and you probably need to have something in writing. But this document is pretty draconian as far as how it's worded, particularly at the end on the stages and whatever. And the other thing you might want to talk about is, number one, I've been to other public areas or public meetings and stuff like that before. And normally, if you're going to speak, there's a card for you to fill out, you give it to the clerk, and then they know how many speakers they're going to have for whatever subject or whatever. And I think that would be helpful here, because it's like today, you gave us five minutes or three or whatever, but you sort of, you know, it gives you a basis for that judgment. And also, as far as your minutes taken or whatever, if everybody that speaks has filled out a card, the card goes through, the names on it, the voting district, spelling of the names correct and everything, saves you a lot of work. So this might be something you want to think about in that area. The other thing is, who does this apply to? Is this going to apply to all of the boards in Rappahannock? Or is this exclusive just to the board supervisors? Because, you know, it could come confusing on a joint meeting. If you have a joint meeting with the planning commissioner or whatever, if they don't have this rule, you know, how does that work? So you kind of want to think about that. And another thing, and it's your last meeting, you did have a chair responsibility at that meeting, because there was an individual in the county that I was unconcerned about. But most public meetings these days have someone from, you know, a security person in the room, because these days, we don't know. I mean, just because we're Rappahannock, that means nothing. And to have that, that also is going to help out your chairman, because if you do have somebody that's giving you a problem or whatever, you really don't have to go through all this verbiage or whatever. I mean, it's obvious, if it's the chairman, you've got the right to say, please escort them out of the building. So it would make, you know, it would make that part easier. And the other thing also is something is that because of the nature of this, it's almost like something you have to read at every meeting so that everybody knows the rules before you get up here, and that's going to be time consuming. So I think, you know, the subject needs to be dealt with. And also the traffic light is sort of, that could be kind of, you know, is this going to be like a big traffic light? Or is it going to be a little traffic light on the, and another subject is, on the podium, which out of courtesy, because I've been here a lot of times and you have public speakers coming and everything. And most board, boards have a podium for the people that come up and speak. So if they have notes or something, they can set them down and it makes it easier if you're a lot of time, if you're a public speaker. So anyway, so just some thoughts on it that you might want to consider when you're discussing. Thank you.
Thank you. Not seeing anyone else in the courtroom that wishes to speak. Anyone on Zoom wishing to speak, please raise your. All right, not seeing anyone on Zoom. I'll go ahead and close the public comment.
Chair, I'll make a motion to adopt the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second it.
Did I move it too fast?
Yeah. Do you need to pull something up?
Chair Donahue found a very minor typo in the Chester Gap agreement. You could pull that, please.
Adopt it as presented, except for?
Item six.
Yep.
Yes. Do I have a second?
Yeah, you have a second. I'm sorry, I'll second that.
All right, most of the second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. The only issue was there's an extra zero. And I put it out to Gary, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten.
This further agree, Rappahannock County will fund on a reversible basis, directly to CGVFD, forty percent of the cost of the program, up to one hundred twenty thousand, eight zero zero, too many zeros. So one hundred twenty thousand, eight hundred. So if somebody would be willing to move, basically, the motion is to authorize the county administrator to execute the FY 2025 memorandum of agreement for support for the Chester Gap Fire Department after approval is legal form by the county attorney, modified to correct the, whereas paragraph that currently lists one two zero eight zero zero to one two zero eight zero zero.
Do you want me to repeat that?
No.
So moved.
Is this the same, well, I'll second for purposes of discussion.
Thank you.
Is this the same as last year essentially, or did it go up, down?
The dollar value is the same. Last year, when I brought this to you, for the first several years, there were independent agreements, Rappahannock and Chester Gap, and Warren and Chester Gap. And we did that last year. And then Warren said, you know, we'd like to have this all together. And so they did with all the same financial numbers as what was in ours. And so I signed that joint one for all of us, based on the authority that the board passed along for this singular one. So this now is three-way, with Warren, Rappahannock, and Chester Gap. And the financial numbers are all the same. Hopefully that makes sense.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right.
My other question was, I know in our first year, and I don't mean to circle back, but we didn't go back for any discussions, but in our first year in this agreement, the percentages were off as opposed to the deliverables. I think we paid half that year, but we only used like forty percent or thirty percent.
Yeah, it's sixty, forty. It's the same as last year, and that trend appears to be holding about right.
Okay, but there was talk of going back at some point and working cooperatively for grants or something to offset that first year. Is that falling off the table?
I'm not aware of any grants that are available and have not had that conversation with Warren County.
Okay.
All right, moving into appointments.
I'd be very curious to hear how my peers feel. I really, I really think we should be of one mind in making an appointment like this. I think Anne would be great for the job. You know, she does a wonderful job on everything else she undertakes for the community. But I'm hesitant to make a motion without some discussion of where everyone else's mind is at.
Well, I'll weigh in. First, I do, I want to start by saying, this is my sixth meeting, and I don't know how many appointments we've made since January. I'd have to go back and count. But we are really very lucky that each time, we've had some very qualified folks come forward and offer up their talents and their passion and their time, all of which are so important, especially time. You know, it's the most valuable thing any of us have. So I think we're really lucky as a county. I can, I can offer your sentiments as well. Ms. Yeoman has done wonderful things for our county, as has Ms. Vanderkam. I know that she participates in some workforce summits that we do have at Laurel Ridge. I can offer up that I have worked with her in some reentry, reentry efforts and initiatives. I think while both ladies would be qualified, I'm leaning a little bit towards making a motion for Ms. Vanderkam after hearing what others have to say. One other thing I do want to say, I've now heard it said three times, and I'm just, I'm sad Dr. Grimsley is not here and that some other folks have left. I've been approached a few times since graduation about the high number of students who went directly into the workforce out of graduation. That, that number is a little skewed, because what happened? The school used workforce interchangeably for workforce solutions at Laurel Ridge and those who were going directly into the workforce. So they're two, they're kind of, they're kind of different. Because I went through that paper and I counted six students that I knew of in, they were continuing their education, they were in various programs with, through workforce solutions at Laurel Ridge. So I did want to, I wanted that on record somewhere, because I've heard it since May spoken three or four times now, and I, there is a difference. So next year, the school's going to have to fix that. That has nothing to do with this appointment. So I apologize for chasing that little squirrel. However, I do think Ibi would make an excellent, excellent addition to the Laurel Ridge Board. That is not to say that Ms. Yeoman wouldn't either. I think we are extremely lucky. In this case, we can't go wrong, I don't think.
I totally agree. I think we've got two great candidates. Ibi was here last time, we advertised it. I know that several people have talked to me about supporting Ms. Vanderkam. And I know that after I was on the benevolent fund board, she came on and she's working as a program director there and has been a liaison between the county and Laurel Ridge. And has recently, I think, had a child graduate from there. Is that right?
Yeah, nursing school.
So I know that Ms. Yeoman, you've done fantastic things in the county, family futures, and I quite appreciate your efforts. I don't want to step on your toes, Donna, but I can make a motion unless you want to make one.
Sure, I will, I move to.
If motions to be made are just asked that you add to the end if you waive any informalities with the appointment process, because if it's Ms. Vanderkam, because she's not present.
I move to appoint Ms. Vanderkam to the Laurel Ridge Community College Board for a term ending June 30th, 2028, with waiving, say that again.
Waiving any informalities with the appointment process.
Any informalities with the appointment process.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. I too value the work that Anne is doing in the county, and my guess is it won't stop because of anything that happens today. I do believe after the conversations I've had with Mr. Winger and Mr. Whitson, that Ibi will fulfill the role very well. And I think her, having her fingers in so many areas of Rappahannock County will allow her to actually add additional value to the Laurel Ridge Board for Rappahannock County students. Any other comments?
I would just thank both the applicants for filing their interest with the county for the position. It's a lot of work, and certainly both applicants already contribute to the community in such wonderful ways. And we are really a blessed county to have so many talented, smart, giving people living here.
Totally agree.
Thank you, Anne.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Thank you. Whole business, county construction.
Provide an update here. Let me go to the, see, first one, it's actually printed out at your desk of the porch, if you mind looking at it. I'll see if that, I provided some preliminary sketches of porch of the jail that is in disrepair now on the Porter Street side. So here's a smaller porch, portico, as the architect has called it, with stair on one side as opposed to both sides, framing centered around the door. The portrait now is skewed, for whatever reason, off-center to the building. And I just want to make sure we're on the right track as we continue moving this envelope project forward. That's part of it.
Looks good. Is it less expensive if we call it a porch?
Well, the base is intended to be brick, which would be oversized brick to match the historical brick. So it probably won't be cheap, but I think bringing the size down will make it affordable and reasonable. You can see the design of the pilasters on the wall mimic the front of the courthouse. Of course, the buildings were built around the same time, and then it has the columns, which we don't have on the courthouse. But if our courthouse was more ornate, they probably would have had those columns. So is this a masonry base? Base, yes. With the brick? How is it, how, do you know the guts of this? How does this work?
Oh, that'll be.
Are they going to pour footers and then just build on top of it?
Yeah, then, right, yeah.
Interesting, cool. And so what's underneath that right now? I haven't.
Dirt. There used to be a generator under there, a small generator.
Right. And so would this be filled, or would this be, what's underneath?
That, I'm not sure about. I think it would be filled. I think the stairs tend to be like granite slab. The goal is to not touch this again.
Right.
Yeah.
And it needs to either be fixed or taken down. Those are the two choices.
I have also reached out, the surveyor that I've had worked with, I guess is just too busy, so I've reached out to another surveyor to confirm the line along Porter Street, as well as do some other work. So they're going to try to jump on that quickly. That same surveyor is putting me in his eight-week mill for, that was a few weeks ago, for the tech sale parcel issue that came up a while back that multiple surveyors now have not been able to get to, so. So that's that, so we'll keep moving on that. It did add a couple more projects to this list, just to make sure the board is aware. And so relative to the envelope, there's been some back and forth with the architect on whether we try to do this, bid out to multiple trades, and then we have to coordinate that or try to find a general that then is responsible for that, but with pre-qualification for the trades that meet our standards. So we're debating that right now. And the architect doesn't want to be responsible for the coordination, day-to-day coordination, and I don't know that we snap at the time. So we'll drive that home here shortly. Courthouse, as you're aware, we're working on the final agreements. There is an agenda item tonight, just the short circuit that, my recommendation is to pick that up at a work session this month. And I think we'll hopefully have it very close to ready for your approval at that time. And maybe when you get to that agenda item, I think it'd probably be okay to discuss with the public who you're talking with. I don't think you lose any negotiation stance. EMS sheriff garage building that the surveyors, engineers, that I was hoping to get to do the sewer work is not really getting back to me. So I'm going to have to find somebody else or do it myself. So we need to get the sewer connection designed in order to start that project. Leach eight pond to tank conversion project at the landfill that took forever to permit, finally got the permit, and now construction is full swing. Tanks are in the ground, pond is empty, liner's out, and grading is underway. So we actually have worked with, this contract includes a special seed mix that is, we got from Sustainability Matters, which is similar to the pilot study that they did on the mound. So the contractor just bought that seed, and it should be here next week. So it'll be seeding area and then just waiting for a few bits and parts, and we'll be hopefully wrapping that up and done with that. So that'll be very nice. The school board office generator project, the submittals have been swapped back and forth a couple times, there's a few minor things that need to be cleaned up. And as soon as those submittals are approved, then I will order all the equipment for, the county will order, the equipment will be county-provided, generators, transfer switch, and surge protection device, like we did for the high school and here. And then we'll, I'll put an IFB out for installation services, like we did at the other sites. So that is coming shortly. And then we've talked a long.
Yeah, yep. So that's happening.
The school board thing?
Yeah. We're getting a generator for the elementary school?
That's a different project.
Okay. I'm trying to read it here.
Yeah, so the school board office is a project the board authorized.
Garage generator, gotcha.
The, we did receive the grant from the state for the elementary school generator.
Oh, we did?
Yes. And so we just, Bonnie responded and submitted all the information needed for that. We'll be, I guess, back to you to appropriate those dollars at your next meeting. And then I've already told the engineer to get me his, he gave me a quote for the design and so I told him, get me the the detailed stuff so we can get that design ready to go and get that approved and get that started. And as soon as that design's done, then we'll order that equipment, which has a really long lead time.
Like?
It was sixty weeks for the transfer switch.
Sixty weeks?
Sixty weeks.
Oh, round numbers.
That was, I remember it because we we asked, we already asked for an extension of the grant.
Remember when we put the generator in at the high school? We started that project when I came on the board.
It was crazy.
In 2018 and I think we finished it.
Yeah.
2023?
Yeah.
So what's the, you said the transfer switch has a sixty-week length?
Yes. The generator was like fifty or something, so it's not.
Yeah, similar timeframe.
So actually, for the school board office generator, the transfer switch had, it's like a twenty-six week. I changed manufacturers and brought that back to eighteen weeks, so it's still long.
What's the size difference between the two that generates?
Well, so at the school, at the bus garage, it's a fifty K W generator. At the high school, it's a two hundred fifty K W generator, very preliminary sizing for the elementary school. And remember, it hasn't been designed, but what I put in the grant application is a three hundred fifty K W generator. Big.
Very cool.
So that's happening. And then talked a long time about trying to do the CCTV project for the courthouse and these other dependent buildings using courthouse security money. That's a project the board authorized some time ago. But unfortunately, the network upon which that needs to use is inadequate and some instances doesn't exist. So the other side, we pay a lot of money for telephone service from Brightspeed for a very old analog system that's housed in the basement of the jail. And so if we can get an updated network, then we can implement a voice over net protocol phone system that will save a lot of money on a monthly basis. So we've been working with a state contract vendor to help us analyze the networks that we have in place, both within the sheriff's office and in the independent buildings and then between buildings, which is very little. And basically found here recently that pretty much none of the network infrastructure that we have in place right now is usable into the future, which I guess I'm totally surprised. So they are now working, that was what we've called Phase Zero, is analyzing everything we already have. That includes the fiber hop that goes from the sheriff's office down to the building zoning office, which is found to be inadequate. So they will be working on a proposal for the structured wiring for each of these buildings and then a fiber network between the buildings that will all land back in sheriff's office and the sheriff's office will then tie to the world through either Comcast or Brightspeed or one of the vendors who's already in there with fiber for nine one one. So that is something you'll see in a future meeting.
It's a big deal.
So and we do pay a lot of money for that phone system, so we're looking forward to.
Would that take care?
And it's risky because.
And so that would presumably take care of the internet situation here and over there.
So this building's not.
Yeah.
For the internet in this room, it's not wired to the world. There's actually a wireless bridge between here and the registrar's office.
Interesting.
Yeah. And the registrar's office is fed from the old admin building by a cat five wire that is not in good shape.
Interesting. Okay.
Well, I feel like we should have a party for the Leach Eight Pond.
Well, Sustainability Matters is trying to schedule so then maybe they can do a little bit of the seating. We'll see if that that lines up. We can give you a handful of seats if you want to throw it around.
All right.
That's great. Thanks, Ann.
Thank you. New commercial activity is usually Mr. Whitson. Do you know anything?
No, I know that he's working on trying to get some pavement marking in town and after some communication with VDOT, we're going to pursue that locally.
New business.
You want to reorder this?
Yeah, we should probably, let's go to number two while we wait for Mr. Goff.
I don't know if you need the formality of the.
Does anybody mind if we do that? Review of county taxation code.
Okay, there's an inquiry about a current section of code, Rappahannock Code, county code section, chapter one fifty-one, section forty-four, having to do with redevelopment areas, conservation areas and rehabilitation. So basically what this does, the state code allows us locally to have a code that identifies areas that are, that the board wants to incentivize redevelopment and that in a nutshell, improved, increased assessed value can receive a tax payment by basically fifty percent of that improvement. So if you have a hundred thousand dollar property, somebody goes in and works on it, turns into two hundred thousand dollar property, my reading is that fifty thousand of that improvement could be taxed right off. So it's never been used here locally. It's been on the books for a while and it came up here recently, but we found, Bonnie found that it's not consistent with state code right now. There are a few changes that happened in 2020 and one was to change the the period of abatement from fifteen to thirty years allowable and some kind of particular language about when that would would happen. And then just the internal reference for code section. The way this this very small code section is set up, if the board wanted to identify redevelopment areas, or as they're called, redevelopment, conservation areas and rehabilitation, you would put in special rules into section one fifty-one forty-seven. So it might be a geographical area, maybe there's a way to frame it as not necessarily a geographical area, but on some other matrix of identifying information for a particular type of use that would apply like, I don't know, apple packing sheds or something like that. I don't, I'm not sure if that would apply and we'd have to get legal to check in. But basically, if you want to be able to do this in the future and identify a particular area, you first have to fix and update your local code. And so what we're here today to do is just to say that Bonnie and Art looked at this, compared it with the state code and recommend that we make these changes, which before we go any further, we want to get authorization from the board to charge down that path and advertise a public hearing to amend this code section at a future meeting.
Should we do this first and then do the further refinement later or does it make more sense to do everything at once?
I think you should do this and then as you're doing this, we'll have the the foundation is set and updated. And at the same time, even in parallel, if you wanted to, you could begin to talk about whether there are certain areas that you want to focus on and try to wrap some language around.
Right. And my understanding is that people would do their improvement and they would still pay taxes on the property, but they would just not pay the taxes for the improvements that are made, basically.
Up to fifty percent of the.
Up to fifty percent. So this came up, I asked Gary to add this to the agenda. This came up in framing the work down at the Berry's property down by River Homes Corner. That was, as you remember, a house that had been abandoned, I think, for about twenty-plus years. We have quite a few houses like that in the county. Yeah, I think it would be great to see some of these older farmhouse houses brought back to life and things like apple packing sheds that are reimagined and not torn down. I think that would be great. We recently lost the corn crib up on Woodard Road. It's hard to see how that might be reinvented, maybe as a fruit stand or something or drive-through, some kind of drive-through. But anyway, I just thought that this was, we should either fix it and use it or take it out. I guess I feel about this like I did the porch, you know? Why do we have it in there if we're not going to use it? And I did, I did talk to former supervisor Frazier about this section and at one point when the board was working with Mike Chandler, he recommended that they instill this, but it has never been used for anything or further refined.
Looks like it was adopted in 2010.
Yeah, so so it's our opportunity to decide if this is important or if this is something we continue to want to set aside.
I know Mr. Whitson had brought something up, it's been a couple of years now, about some sort of way to allow us to use old buildings, renovate them and help, you know, beautify the county at the same time and have rental properties. It's a, to me, it's a win-win, so.
Yeah, I I agree. And I think most recently, we've talked about it and I think twice, the Ben &amp; Mary Steakhouse in Falkir County has has been brought up. The Golightly family worked with various organizations and groups and and renovated that 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 county favorite over there. So I think this is very important. I like it.
We need a motion.
I would make a motion to instruct staff to advertise Article eleven as added to today's agenda for a public hearing at the next regularly scheduled board supervisors evening session. That's sufficient, Gary?
Sure.
Do I need to waive any formalities or informalities?
You can, I don't think there are any.
Yeah. We have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Motion, a second, any further discussion?
Just real quick, so what did you say, Ms. Smith? You said that what it does is it, can you, can you just quickly explain again?
Sure. So basically, like take, somebody buys an old farmhouse that's kind of falling apart and they would like to either rebuild it for their own habitation or as a month-to-month rental or even as an Airbnb, which would, of course, they'd have the waiting period and then have to come from before this board. But what would happen, and I don't know how constrained we are by state code, Gary.
I can read it.
Or if we, if we can kind of change the parameters for the credits or are those embedded in state code?
Yeah, so the, it's like I can't read it anywhere here. The partial exemption provided by the local governing body shall be provided in the local ordinance and shall be either I, an amount equal to the increase in assessed value or a percentage of such increase resulting from the construction of the new structure or other improvement to the real estate as determined by the commissioner of revenue or other local assessing officer, or two, an amount up to fifty percent of the cost of such construction or improvement as determined by ordinance. You know, I I took that to mean fifty percent, but maybe you can do the whole amount, I'm not sure.
So it'll be a one-time exemption of tax?
It would be up to thirty years. You can, you can say, okay, you invested all this, I'm gonna, the assessed value doesn't change, but the tax is is figured on a lower amount for up to thirty years.
Number of years.
So that, section forty-seven, our local ordinance, would define the group of structures that this would apply to and then the rules of the road on how much of the abatement would be, how long it would be and all that. And that would be some finesse work to figure out how far and wide. I didn't see any crease law.
We probably want to talk to the commissioner of revenue about the guidelines for percentages.
And the treasurer to figure out how we could actually pull this off without it being very confusing and our software choking.
And no one's taken advantage of it since?
Two thousand ten, correct.
Two thousand ten?
Never used.
Huh. I guess maybe people didn't know?
Well, they would have to come to the board. The board would have to identify an area. And so how broadly can you define area? Can it be the area of farm structures that are, that were, you know, functionable in the year nineteen eighty but no longer? Can you do that or is it geographic area? And that's where Art would have to do some work.
Yeah.
Did that answer your question, Van?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, we have a motion, a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed?
So I guess the the work will be really this last, like you were saying, populating this last section.
That's right. And it might, you could have three or four different things, right? And there could be different rules for the different types of things.
I wondered if we could even structure it by dollar amounts, like if you put X amount into the building, could you get longer period of abatement and structure it that way? Seems like that might be sensible. But all good topics for discussion as we move forward.
Absolutely.
I guess this doesn't even really necessarily limit itself to structures, does it?
Ah, well, I just read that section.
We don't have a lot of land in in Rappahannock that's, you know, destroyed.
Edged.
No.
But but it doesn't, it doesn't seem like it necessarily, you know, going far field with this, but it could be, it's not just buildings.
Increase in assessed value or percentage such resulting from the construction of the new structure or other improvement.
Or other improvement.
I guess you could construct a.
To the real estate.
Lake or something.
Interesting, okay, cool.
Yep, interesting.
It just, you know, it's, it's interesting because this is, you know, about redevelopment, conservation, rehabilitation of properties. So it's just an interesting idea for sure.
And we're so dedicated to adaptive reuse.
Yep.
I think it's a great fit.
Yep.
All right. Open forum, public comment procedures.
Block that order, Art, just a motion.
You couldn't miss it.
So this is, came as a topic that came out of the board's extended work session that you had and some discussion there and follow up with, I think, some board members wanting to make sure that you avoided situations where you potentially interfered with individuals' First Amendment rights and understood the process through which you would handle a situation when when there was an issue either online or public. And I think this was also an offshoot out of the discussion about how to handle the online Zoom participation in a really high level. As long as you treat all of your speakers consistently relative to time, those speakers can say anything they want and they can say things that are very unpleasant and you have to allow them to do that. But if you try to cut people off before their consistent time allowed, that other people have been allowed, that's when you can get into issues. And so Mr. Goff tried to devise some structure to a process that would help, help the board avoid situations where they could, you know, could become inflamed. And so that's the hundred thousand foot level. Mr. Goff's opinion is attached to board docs. He's here, you're here. Happy to facilitate further.
Well, Mr. Goff, thank you for doing this. This was kind of something that I took out of that retreat that we had and just quickly to address some public comments, I think that for me, what this is really about is making sure that our public, our citizens have the right to get up here and say what they want to say, that flat out, and that we don't overstep by cutting people off inadvertently. And that would come, or inadvertently, and which would be about content, could be. That really is not okay with me. I really think that we need to have an open forum here and I think that Mr. Goff's opinion here addresses this really well when he says that basically it's just about consistency between speakers. And so I I don't see this as draconian at all. In fact, what I see this as is facilitating people and making sure that folks know in the county that they can come and say stuff. The reason that I feel that we should continue down the path of allowing, let me say it this way, I don't really want to go down the path of requiring people to put their name on a card. People in Rappahannock, I want people to come and be able to get up and say something without having to write something down. I don't want to have to go through that extra thing of, well, before you speak, you need to do this. No, they're already here, they're already on Zoom. I mean, we can have a larger discussion about that and about the procedure of how we're going to let people talk, but I just thought it would be a really good idea for the citizens to know that we are not going to step on their toes because of content. Like you can come here and say whatever's on your mind, regardless of how distasteful somebody else. somebody else might think it, regardless of content. And so I think that Mr. Goff's opinion really lays this out, and I think that the only way to do that is to just be consistent, and that just means time. The red light, green light thing is something that's really easily done with like an iPad, you can get it at half, and you can just put it on the table here, it's, I think it's pretty straightforward, it's really not a big deal, I don't think. But I, I just, I just, that's really what I got out of the retreat, I was like, oh, that's really interesting, you know, it's, I really, really value civic engagement and people coming and feeling they can talk, and I feel like during our meetings, we all sort of know each other in the room a lot of the time, and I just want to continue fostering that. I would just really never want to get to a level where we, somebody gets cut off when they should not be, because then they would have a real opportunity at that point to say that it's not fair, and they'd be right. So thanks for doing, coming up with that.
One of the things I brought up there too was, because we are so small, and one of the nice things about being here, a lot of times there's a lot of great party between the benches and, and the board members, you know, Mr. Atkins will stand up at the end and he'll get another, you know, speech, right, in addition to what he's already said in my, in front of the microphone.
Which Mr. Atkins?
So, but, and that's fine, as long as it, that everybody gets that same opportunity to keep going back at you, because you can't just, that's when the arbitrary and precious part comes in. So it's kind of unfortunate really, because you want to have, everybody have, be able to speak their mind. And, but the only way you can consist, because here's, here's how it played out, is if you did cut somebody off after they, like, they're speaking from back there, and they've already had their chance at the microphone, then if you get sued, say, well, then they, they pull out the films of all our previous meetings, say, well, they've allowed this before, and so why are they picking on me? It's content discrimination, right? So that's why I think my advice to the board is, once you adopt a policy, you got to enforce it rather strictly. And Ron had a good idea, I think there should be a podium with a red light, green light on it, red light, yellow light, green light on it. And the reason is, it, it does help, we have speakers in here, a lot of times we do have notes, and they want to refer to them. I know when I'm arguing something in court, it really helps too, because somehow the podium focuses you, and that also, I think it helps people stay on track. It gives a little bit of physical comfort or something. So I, I do think that was a good suggestion. The card system wouldn't work with Zoom, and you can't have two different systems there, how do, you know, you can't have one rule for Zoomers and one for in-persons. So that my, my advice to the board is to spend whatever Gary found was, like $1,500 on.
I think there's a free app.
Well, I think, we've, we've got some ways to, the podium in the back room is just so big and it blocks views, and I believe we've already purchased a translucent podium that just needs to be assembled and placed here.
Oh, cool. Well, in my reading of this opinion also, it says that the time just needs to stay consistent within the meeting, correct?
It does.
So, so if we feel like there's a meeting that is, there's not a lot of people here, we can make the time 10 minutes for everybody.
Ah.
At the beginning.
For, I.
For public comment. We can set, the chairman sets the amount.
Like, meeting to meeting, it could change, month to month. If you feel like you're going to have something where there's going to have 100 people showing up, you set it at three. Today, there's not that many people.
Oh, okay, now I see what you're driving at. So like with the 2A thing where we had 300 speakers.
Yep.
Versus tonight where we've had five.
Yes.
And so you could allow those who attend this meeting to speak longer.
Yep.
At the beginning, you made the determination at the beginning of the meeting.
I think that's reasonable, understanding that we do have business to do, and we do have to do our business within a reasonable time period for it to be really public business. I know that there are boards that go all night into the next day. I hope and pray that we will never be one of them.
Your ordinance says that you will provide at least 30 minutes for public, open, public comment.
And your, your document says, well, the board allows the chairman to determine the length of address by members of the public in increments of minutes, typically three minutes per speaker.
Yes, and, and, and so I do think we probably have to add that to our little speech about today because of the topics, I'm going to.
Make it three.
Reduce it to this amount due to, to the interest that we perceive and the number of speakers that will be here, so as to allow everybody time to speak, and we will extend the period of public comment so that everyone who is here to speak gets that opportunity. I don't see it like a First Amendment infringement by that, but I do think that if you're allowing one guy to go on, you know, for 10 minutes, and then you're, then when that red light comes on, you're cutting everybody else off, that's where we got to stop doing that.
Yeah.
Well, I.
Go ahead.
I was just going to say, I, I just did some digging around to see what other places do. I do think it's, whatever, whatever happens, I think consistency and structure is key, because yes, while we are small and walk in and we, in large part, know everyone, just as it's already been stated, if we let XYZ go on for 10 minutes because we don't mind what they're saying, and it's nice and polite, and it's, it's easy to hear, but then when ABC says something and maybe it's not so easy to hear, we, I think we need that structure to, and, to stand, you know, stand on and stand for. Also, when looking at other places, I found it kind of interesting, three minutes really is kind of a norm, regardless of size. I spoke to two counties who are smaller than us by about somewhere between 5 and 1,000 people, and something that they did that was, I found interesting, you got three minutes unless you were speaking for a group, and then if you were speaking for a group of people, you were allowed five minutes. They too suggested the sign-in for similar reasons, you know, I don't want to, I certainly am not suggesting anything that's going to be laborious, I don't want to make anything more laborious or, or so formal that it feels rigid, but one county told me, she said, yeah, they fill out the form, and then she said they have a strict no dialogue, which I think is probably wise, because again, if the dialogue is going well, and the next month is not going well, and all of a sudden we're like, no, we don't want the dialogue, we can show, as Mr. Goff said, it's inconsistent and, and it could be detrimental. But filling out that form, if you have a question, then it's, in their county, the county has seven to 10 days to reply. If they want a reply to that comment, then the county replies in seven to 10 days. And like I said, these are not big counties, they were small counties, both 1,6,300 and 1,6,700 people, I think, and I will also throw in, those, the two counties that I spoke to are being crunched by some other bigger counties under, like, big developments. So they're very similar, they're similar in, in makeup, and, and you pull up their websites and it's picture of water and, and green, and very similar to us.
What's their ADM?
So. You know what? I didn't get that far. I was talking about public comment.
Good question.
Tomorrow, I'll call him back. Hey, do you remember me?
So if I'm hearing you correctly, the give and take after public comment, say it's a zoning issue or something, and we allow one person to give their opinion, does that open it up to everybody else that's in the room?
Yes.
Okay.
And there is a, there is a difference between an open forum, public comment, talk about anything you want, and a public hearing on a particular matter, which you can constrain them to talk about only the matter.
Right.
And so maybe that needs to be borne out, and there is some information in our, in our code about public hearings and public comments. The, the way this moves forward is for staff to work on some sort of policy that the board would ultimately review and, you know, tweak and adopt that would be parallel with Chapter 30 of your ordinance, which is your meetings document, or I guess you could put it into that ordinance.
That's my, that's one of the questions I think the board really has to think about, is whether you actually insert it into Chapter 30, which is kind of my preference, because it's, especially because of the First Amendment issue, you don't want to make people dig and look for the policy, just print it as the law. And I have a question for Ms. Comer too. You said that if they had a question, they'd write it on a card, give it to the county, and they had to answer the question within seven days. Were there any parameters to the kind of questions we're talking about?
Well, in, they filled out their card, name, district, I believe she said they have them put their date and their email, phone number, or whatever, and then what they were there to ask, what were they speaking about that night? And that's all she offered up, I didn't ask any further. I certainly can go back and ask those questions.
Well, I'd be interested in talking to that county attorney, do you know, can you tell us, is it okay for you to tell us who you were talking to?
Am I going to get them in trouble?
Sounds like.
I don't want to make, I don't want to make enemies. That was Charles City County.
Oh, Charles City.
Charles City, okay. Yeah, I can, I can communicate with that.
I suspect the, we'll respond to you within the next number of days, is, is the, kind of the bridge between back and forth during a meeting.
That's how I understood it.
And you'd never hear from us ever again.
Uh huh, that was exactly how I understood it, was it was more courtesy, you know, than, than anything. The other thing is, I think if we, whatever we come up with, if we come up with something, I think we just simply, if we put it on our website, you know, here's what we expect, here's what, here's what your, the timeline is, three minutes, five minutes, whatever, it's five minutes unless there are 25 people, whatever. I just, and I think structure is key and important and fairness, and obviously, I'm not, I don't, someone can come and talk about whatever they want, just do it in three minutes.
I'm very curious about this question and answer thing, because who's going to answer it and who are they speaking for?
Yeah.
You know, we're, we're a five-member board, and we don't always have, you know, a uniform, monolithic opinion.
Right.
And so that kind of puts the staff who's answering that question maybe at variance with a member or two.
It could be simple objective, what was the tax revenue from something in the last year?
That might just be considered a.
Or it could be, what do you think about this?
Yeah, yeah.
I don't know, I'm leaning more towards just treat those kind of things as FOIA responses, because you don't want to also be put on the spot where you have to answer something that you haven't made up your minds about.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, that is tricky.
I just wanted to say, question about individuals versus groups having more time, I think it should be uniform, I don't think, because, I mean, you might be representing a group like your family, like what's the difference? It could still be a group of people. No, I think that could get us into trouble. One thing that has come up in our meetings historically is that folks have yielded their time to other individuals that wish to speak longer.
Yep.
This would be the appropriate place to address that. There's one other thing.
And if it were me, I would not allow that.
Well, I, I mean, I think if you're going to, if you're going to not allow it, you've got to memorialize it.
Yes.
Yep.
And then the other thing, in terms of taking a list or taking cards or whatever you do before a meeting, I can't tell you how many meetings I've sat through that during the course of public comment, somebody decides to put their hand up and then says, well, I came to this meeting and I wasn't going to say anything, or I came about this, but now that I've heard that, I really want to say something about this too. And, and so I hope, one of the wonderful things about being a small county where we do so often know each other and the people that come to speak to us, is that we do have that flexibility and courtesy, and I hope that in trying to institute fairness, we don't sacrifice that.
Yeah, and I do want to, when, I was just sharing what other places were doing, I wasn't suggesting that we do that, nor was I suggesting that it's limited to whoever fills out those things.
I understand, it's just discussion.
Yeah.
I think that, before I got on the board, Mr. Atkins, Tommy Atkins, got up and said, can I ask a simple question?
Yeah.
I think that was, I think it resonated with everybody that was in that room, it was at school, it was a joint meeting at the elementary school. And I think because the board has worked through way before my time what they're going to do and how they're going to interact with the public, this starts down the right path of doing, I think, what we're all talking about, which is, at least for me, is making sure that the public can come into this room, say what's on their mind regardless of the content, know that they can do that, and that there is no impediment to that and that it will be fair. And in terms of addressing those questions, I think it's a really interesting question or thing that Mr. Goff brings up, because, you know, we, county staff cannot be answering policy opinionated sort of, hey, where should we take this politically type questions, and that would just be a mess. So I'm not sure what to do about that, but I agree.
What hours the dump is open, they can answer.
Right, exactly. And I agree with Ms. Smith that we probably should not allow people to speak on behalf of groups, because lots of people have lots of cousins, and.
Yeah.
There's just one group of Rappahannock.
They could just make up a group, let's face it. Yeah, what was interesting, what was interesting, and I saw that in more than one locality, and what was interesting though, because one, if you were speaking on behalf of a group, you had to stand as did everybody else in your group. So I thought, okay, so you're speaking on behalf of a group, but then every, the group still has to come? All of it was very interesting, it, you know, I, like I said, I looked at several localities and.
So did that mean they all got on the record waiving their individual rights to speak?
Yeah, that's right, yeah, totally. So then after the five minutes, one of them says, I do want to talk.
Yeah.
When you get one minute.
Yeah, and I think their speed is really thinking more practically.
I've been in a lot of meetings, Art, as you well know. No one, no one, I, I don't think anyone had a traffic light, so to speak. No one played any, you know, warning music or anything like that.
I think Warren County cuts the mic. Time's up, boom.
Yeah, we don't have that ability.
We can have a simple timer, we don't have to have a red light.
Yeah, just.
I mean, I do try to pay attention to the time on my iPad, so that I.
And you can signal it.
Yeah, and I do though.
If it's, if it's a hot button item on the planning commission, like something we had this past month, I, I write down next to the agenda item, if you can read my scribble scrabble, when the speaker starts and when the speaker stops. And of course, we have everything on tape, ideally, so there is that. Sometimes it is hard, and, and I do think folks should be afforded an opportunity to wrap up their comments. I, I don't think going a minute over three minutes is crazy.
Everybody gets a minute over three minutes.
But then everybody gets that minute.
Well, I'm just saying that, you know, it's just something to speak, to think through. I, I hope we don't get to a place where we just cut people off. I do know it, we do need to be fair and uniform, but I don't like the way things are phrased in this, I'll just say, this does not appeal to me. I've sat in meetings where Ron's cut me off, and I've probably sat in meetings and cut Ron off, but we were chairing, but we were chairing meetings, and that's the job. And at the end of the day, the business has to get done, and in some of the most heated meetings I've sat through, or chaired, I should say, I've heard from people on both sides afterward and said, that was really a tough meeting, but I know at the end of the day, everybody felt like they were heard, and that to me is the biggest compliment that I can get as a board member. So I hope that we don't do something that makes people not feel that way, because I think that would be a real shame.
One thing I'll say about the traffic light thing, one, one other thing is, to your point, and that is, you don't want to cut people off like right in mid-screen, because that's, we're all brought up in the South, we're not supposed to be rude.
Right.
Okay? Well, except for that. But, but generally, the yellow light really does help people focus to wrap things up, and it also does something else more subtly. That camera over there shows those lights going on. So, so now you've got a record of instantaneous enforcement that is objective in time, so you've got the first, you've got those first two minutes that green light's on, then if you set it, then the yellow light's on for the last minute, everybody knows they got one minute.
Right.
Before that red light comes on, and it's the machine being rude and not the chair.
Right. Well, what if somebody forgets to hit the button or the equipment malfunctions?
Well.
That's where the timer on.
And we've got Gary, I mean presumably here to run it for this meeting, or whomever is going to run it for this meeting, who's going to run it for BCA? Is it going to be something that BCA wants to adopt or needs to adopt?
Right, so that was a good question.
BCA adopt their own rules.
Planning commission?
Yeah.
This would apply to the board supervisors, you do in your zoning chapter regulate how the planning commission and BCA handle their business, but what it says. how the planning commission and BCA handle their business, but what it says is that they make their own rules. And so, unless that were to change, then they would make their own rules. This would just be a BOs thing.
But I, but I think the import of this is that if we don't do this, we are moving forward on a case-by-case basis, and that has baked into it prejudice. There's just no other way about it. I agree with you that it would be nice to be able to just allow people, but that comes with not being fair.
So, you think this is a problem that we currently have?
No, no. What I'm saying is that this institutes fairness. What we're currently doing is not fair, because we let some people speak and some people not. And we cut people off due to content. That, that is going on.
Allegedly.
Allegedly. So, somebody could say like, "Hey, like, you know, like, all these meetings, like, I was kinda going back and forth, and then I was told to be quiet, but like, if you look at the historical record, like, you don't always do that." And so, they have an argument to be made about that they're being silenced due to content. That's the...
So, complaints have not come in heretofore, but they...
But they could. And so, the only way to therefore make it so it's a level playing field for everybody is to just have the same rules. The rules, in terms of time, can change. Three's the most common, but, you know, you could do more or whatever. And that's what I see, is that I just really wanna make sure that people don't feel like there's prejudice.
So, this came out of the retreat then that we did?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yep.
I just have to say, I didn't think we really came out of that with much. And given that the gal that implemented that, or orchestrated that retreat for us, I mean, I just, I just don't think she really connected with what's going on here in a rural county. And I, I just don't, I just don't know that this is a real issue. I mean, I just think we have a lot of other more pressing issues than this.
It's not an issue until somebody sues ya.
Well, I just, I mean, we do do it to people. Like, as, as Mr. Goff was saying, like, the minute that you tell someone at like 10:30, like, "Hey, like, okay, good, we're done." Like, if you start to go back and forth, that person could literally come back to us and be like, with, with an issue. And it's just, it's, and it would be technically right. I mean, this is the thing, this is like, this is what this would get beyond. Also, I think it would set a platform for people that they know that they weren't being treated unfairly. Like, it's like, why did you let that person talk more than me, or whatever? And it's like, this would allow everybody to say, "Hey, man, we have the same rules for everybody." And everybody gets it. I think we just would need to determine how long we want people to speak. And the ordinance says 30 minutes at least for public comment, and there's a difference between public hearing and public comment. I, I just am really, yeah, I just wanna make sure that everybody's rights are protected in the sense that they can come to these meetings and not think that they're being silenced. And I think that this is a way of saying, "Hey, like, you are not, like, rules." So, anyway, I would make a motion to move to request staff to prepare a policy guiding structure of public comment opportunities.
So, Mr. Goff said he preferred an ordinance, and I don't know how, and so, the difference, an ordinance is a lot easier to keep track of over time. We do a decent job, I would say, we do a very good job now of keeping track of policies as well, because Board Docs allows us to do that. Of course, it allowed past administrations to do that too. But they tend to get lost in the minutes and, you know, of time, whereas an ordinance is codified and it doesn't get lost. So, there's value in, in that. That's really the only value in my mind.
So, what happens when we're having a meeting and someone in the gallery asks to be identified by the chair?
Is it public comment to speak?
So, is it an open forum, public comment, or is it on a particular topic? And I think maybe the ordinance needs to, you know, get that clear, because it is, is a much different... You can cut people off on content. If we're here to talk about public hearing SE 240201, and please provide your input on that, and they start telling you about two A rights, you're like, whoa, whoa, whoa. We're not here to talk about that. We're, we're not gonna take, you know, five minutes of, all these other people are wanting to talk about this particular special exception. You don't have to hear those people. So...
Did you finish your motion? Sorry.
Uh, move to request staff to prepare an ordinance guiding structure of public comment opportunities. Just for further discussion and clarification for us.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
I have a question, though. Can I second it and then que...
Question, yes.
I'll second it, for purposes of discussion.
Yep.
I, I'm not liking everything in this either, so I just wanna make sure that this is just our springboard, that we, yeah, there's stuff in here that, I appreciate Mr. Goff's work, but there are things in there that I don't think are necessary, where there are other things that I think maybe should be clearer.
Well, I would say it would be important for Art and I to know those things that should be retained, those things maybe that don't need as much detail. And anything that comes back will be reviewed by the board, and then ultimately, if it's ordinance, it'll be a public hearing. So, you will be overtly seeking the input from the public as to whether you should amend current Chapter 30, or, or maybe adopt a different chapter with whatever particular language you, you come up with.
Were, I, I wasn't, are you intending to put into the ordinance language this specific, like, one through five?
That was, I just think that'd be the list that the chair was requesting to help guide her as to what to do on how to shut it down and take care of it when there is a violation. Yes, and I would think that it wouldn't really be appropriate in an ordinance to have the checklist.
Right, 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 got it.
But that's more like legal advice to the chair as to how you handle the ones that aren't complying with the, with the traffic light system. You know, you gotta warn them several times before you threaten to call the sheriff to have them removed. You find a real amount of order.
Right.
But that's, and I don't think that that should be in the ordinance, but that I will, we'll draft it like as like a little pull-out section or something, however you want.
I think when we started, we asked for some sort of statement that could be made, but I...
I think the word was script.
Yeah, something.
And that would allow you to come up with something that you could rewrite, so it sounds different.
Right.
It doesn't have to be this. It's just the, it's just the skeleton of, hey, everybody gets the same amount of time, we're not gonna, we're not gonna favor one person over another person.
I, I don't think that, I don't think that maybe my previous question was understood, which is that oftentimes when you get into an agenda item, someone may ask to be heard in the gallery. And are we going to discontinue that?
Right, I...
How do you treat that if it's not during public comment?
So, what I, I tried to answer, and maybe it wasn't clear, is if it's not an open forum, not your general public comment, come and speak about anything you want, then it's different. And maybe whatever is written in this ordinance should make that clear of the rules of the road, so that if you do open it up during a topic about amending the ordinance to change the open forum content, that there's a script that says, if you open the floodgates, then maybe you do have to open the floodgate for everybody to provide you input on that topic only. And so, that's something that we, you know, we could try to put, build in, but it's separate from the come to the podium and speak whatever vile thing, you know, any of the worst things you can think of, people can say right there, and you will listen to them say it. And then their three minutes will be over, and the next person will come up and talk about butterflies. And that has to all be the same, but it's different if it's about this topic.
So, like in your example, right, you were talking about like, we're, we're past public comment, we're talking...
Right, we're in an agenda item, and Mr. Jenkins in the back row used to live on the property that's on the agenda, and he knows something about that property that we don't know, but that might be instructive to us to know it in this agenda item. And he puts up his hand and say he lives in Piedmont District. And I say, "Madam Chairman, Mr. Jenkins in the back row used to live on that property, and I would ask for you to recognize him at this time. Do we recognize Mr. Jenkins?" Or...
I think you should, yeah.
Or...
We should. But if we recognize him, then we have to...
But then we give him a second swipe at the apple, then everybody should have another swipe at the apple.
I think that's what...
And I should say that I've always thought that that's what we were doing.
Yep.
And if it's in public comment, that, which is, this is what I think this is specifically addressing, where it's a completely open forum, where we just have to have some like guide rails. In your example, yeah, you can open it up, but I've always thought when we start opening it up, we genuinely allow other people to join in, and that's fun.
We do, we usually do have a free-willing exchange, but I just...
Which I agree with you.
I wanna make sure that we are, if we're, if we're doing something, I wanna make sure we do it right.
Yeah. But in that example, Mr. Jenkins is allowed to talk about that piece of property, and then when he, or someone next to him starts to talk about gas prices, you can constrain the conversation to the...
Based on the topic.
Which we cannot do during public comment.
Right.
Unless it's the gas prices, for when Mr. Jenkins used to own the property.
Yep.
Cross that bridge if you get to it.
I think this makes sense. To me, if Mr. Jenkins is gonna be allowed to speak, then I feel like as chair, you have to say, "Does anybody else have a comment?"
Yeah, I think on this topic.
On that particular topic, yep.
But at least having those rules, at least as a board, then we all know kind of like what's going on.
Yep.
So, there's open forum, the defined topic in public hearings that are kind of three big buckets that might come before you, and it probably makes sense for, for, you know, us to put some meat on the bones of the process for each of those. There's already, it's already in there for public hearings, it just isn't in the ordinance for open forum or the kind of defined topics.
All right, we have a motion, a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Nay.
Thank you.
I just don't think this is a priority item.
All right. We are information reports and correspondence, board committee reports, recreational facilities.
What is, what month are we in? So, we had a great...
We had a great free fishing day, which was fantastic, and I wanna thank everybody who came and helped, and it was just a really, really great day. We had a very successful unveiling of the mural, which is fantastic at the park. She's worked so hard on that, Linda has, and it's facilitated by a RAC grant, which was fantastic. We are making progress on many different fronts, and the playground committee is, is completely vitalized and has tons of energy, and they're kind of moving forward with two different kind of levels of envisioning a new playground, different costs there. So, we're just kind of working through that, which is gonna be really exciting, because now we have a really good playground committee put together headed by Ms. Jenny Jenkins, who's wonderful. So, a lot of movement there. So, that's great.
That is great.
Yep.
Public safety committee, Mr. Whitson is not here.
It's a busy meeting, a lot of topics, agendas on board docs. There was some discussion about county funding of targeted capital. There's these life pack, Stryker Physio Products life packs have turned over a new version, and a lot of the companies are wanting them. And so, Darren has been working to try to see if he can structure a deal. And so, there's some discussion about whether the county should be involved in the capital for those companies that have a need. So, I think there will be a recommendation, there was, is a recommendation to the board, it'll be at the next meeting. There was a discussion about paid personnel from the county assisting other companies if they need it, and I think that'll come to the board here next meeting.
Can I just, I wondered, I looked at that agenda, and I wondered what agenda item those were brought up under, because I didn't really see anything about that on the agenda. I was looking for more information after the newspaper article.
It, it came in, I think, the next to last agenda item, which is like a roundtable.
Ah, so it, it really shouldn't have even been an action item.
Well, there's nothing in the rules procedure to talk about that, but of when things can be acted on or not.
That's unfortunate.
But it will be brought to the board in August, would be my guess.
Well, we do have an equipment item already in the budget for, for the companies, that we could just use that equipment item to pass the money through. We've kept that in.
Apparatus repair, each company, one is getting $5,000 a year.
So, we could use that line item if we didn't wanna...
$10,000.
Make it too complicated.
$10,000 a year. $60,000.
Yep.
Yep, that's an option.
It would probably uncomplicate it a lot.
Well, they already use that money, they'll tell you for other things like debt service.
Yeah, they do. That's why we kept it in there. That was the first year on the board that I served. The companies asked that we keep it in there, because it was being attempted to be removed under the fire services agreement. So, we kept it in, rightly so. And that is an opportunity for money to flow with an understanding.
Yep.
Planning commission.
We did meet, we had a text amendment, a citizen introduced text amendment, which we made a recommendation not to entertain, that the board not approve that. It's basically changing, omitting the option for being on a paved road in agriculture and conservation easements.
Being able to seek a waiver from the acreage requirements for properties...
For Airbnb.
On a paved road.
Right, they wanna destroy paved. So, they live basically back on an unpaved road, and they wanna be able to open an Airbnb back there. So, they were asking that we strike the word paved. So, the planning commission unanimously agreed that we should not recommend that to the board. We had the Skyline Vineyard Inn from the Hendricksons, a new application for them for an Airbnb, which we also recommended that the board not approve. And that was all seen unanimous. And then we had another matter for a very interesting short-term rental Airbnb applicant from Flint Hill that I think is a really good application. It had some complications with shared septic that a neighboring property owner lent a lot of information to the discussion. And so, there were questions with some details in the health department report that we thought it wise to have those facts established before we made a recommendation one way or the other. So, hopefully, we'll be able to conclude that business in July and have you a recommendation on those.
The first two will be public hearings in August at the board.
Excellent. Fire levy board didn't meet, I assume?
Nope.
Okay. Chair's reports.
All the information's on, and I'll just highlight the blue text there. While these reports are through June 30th, these aren't the end of fiscal year reports. Still bills to come in for goods and services rendered up through June 30th, and revenue to be accrued, like sales tax. So, everything seems to be in good order, though.
Circuit court clerk.
The clerk requested that, that she be given the opportunity to pass along a little revenue report of the various fees, court fees and whatnot that come through her office. So, if the board thinks this is valuable, we can continue to provide this to you.
It is interesting to see all of them.
Yeah. For my report, I do get one little piece of information that I forgot to put in there. I reached out to Culpepper regarding the decal program and revenue for FY24, which was a step in years, $30,576. And by the end of the year, there was 202 decals. So, if those 202 individuals purchased their full-year decal, then it'll be $70,296 in FY25.
Excellent.
Can you repeat that 70 what?
Seven zero two nine six. It's $348 a year. We administratively bumped the number from 28 to $29, and talked to them about just doing that. It'd be about a CPI without running through a bunch of algebra again. And it's just, we need to get the data settled before we do that. So, $348 a year for 202 decals. There's no guarantee that the same 202 people will actually do it in FY25, but I think 100, there's 100 and some odd had already gotten a decal for FY25.
And is it causing you any angst, or you...
No, I also, I also, we got the latest, we get monthly invoices from Page County, and with that, we get statistics about what's pulled from where. And I updated the statistics on Amosville, and I think we... And I updated the statistics on Amosville, and I think we budgeted for 25% reduction. It's less than that, so I don't know if that's because of, because some of the waste is coming in through decals as opposed to before, so it was, I think, 17 to 21% reduction. Can't remember the categories, based on hauling or weight of recyclables and waste. Still a significant reduction in the costs for the Amosville site because of the reduction in materials that are coming in.
Excellent.
Notwithstanding the fact that you're getting revenue.
Review of legal matters.
This information's updated. The biggest thing on all of this is the Caprucio case. The site is restored on Seven Ponds Road.
Wow.
The contractor told me that they wanted to get in there with a lot of equipment and people and get it done and get out of there. And they did. And it looks fantastic from the road today, so that's very good. The Flint Hill case was heard by the Court of Appeals. Mr. Capps told me it could be four months. So I don't, that's just a guess, until one opinion comes out. Not much else going on. The other, as I reported previously, the tourist home case brought by Mr. Conick was removed to federal court, and I put in there the schedule for that.
Thank you. Looks like there's a lot of action in the building office.
Yeah.
Are there any anticipated revenue increases as a result of the building picking up so much?
Uh, the fee, yes. I mean, I don't know, we can look at the report that's posted, but we can, we can take a look at that and see where we're trending or where we finished 24.
It just seemed like things picked up noticeably in the last month or so, so after not a great start. All right.
And then I did add this item 10, I just want to make sure the board was aware, the press release by Rapid Home, the, our fire and rescue department did participate in this, providing information upfront and agreeing to assist. And so they got a $100,000 grant to begin to try to build out this rural health network program, which is great, is trying to get to people where they are, and if it's done well, it probably will reduce the, the emergency calls in the middle of the night.
Yep.
Which, that's where EMS plugs in.
It's a nice size grant.
Yeah, that's amazing.
So hopefully, though, Madison's done some very successful stuff in that, and I think there's a lot of coordination going on.
All right, matters presented by the board. Ms. Comer?
I have none.
Smith?
Come on out to the Fourth of July at Van Vanu, enjoy, enjoy. Buy your raffle tickets if you haven't bought one yet.
Opens at two.
Are there any left?
I think there were over the weekend.
And it opens at two this year.
Yeah.
Yep.
So, if you come early.
Mr. Carney?
I'd just like to say, I think all the fire and rescue, and especially Amosville, for holding probably the best carnival on the planet. My kids are always thrilled, and so am I. They even convinced me to go on one of the rides, which left me feeling very nauseous for 72 hours.
Oh, my gosh.
And my kids asked to go back the next day, and I was like, eh.
They wanted to get you on it again.
Some of these used to be. Oh, man, I'll tell you what, but boy, is it fun.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Yep, and I don't have anything today. And so we're not doing the closed meeting, recess until 7:00 PM.
That's it, 3:34.
That's it, 3:34. There we go.
Set a record.
Close meeting.